Good evening. I call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order, June 8, 2020, at 6:03 PM. If you please all stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, I am a statesman, to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We move on. Three. Public input, however, still further notice to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with ours A-91-8, the state emergency and governor's orders restrictions on public gathering. Tom Alton is moving to, moving from in-person meetings to remote audio participation. To remotely attend the meeting audio only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. For telephone access, remote access instruction listed under news and announcements on the homepage. Office 603-875-2113 or 603-875-0229. Between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM for the dialing code and the meeting ID for each selectmen's meeting. There continues to be no public input at this time. If you wish to add to the selectmen's office at 603-875-2113 or 603-875-0229. Or email the selectmen at selectmen@alton.nh.gov. Or mail a letter to the Board of Selectmen at PO Box 659, Alton, New Hampshire, 03809. Your comments, questions, or concerns, we read at the next available meetings and answer at the meeting from the next available meeting. Don't I need the approval of the agenda? I have one item on the E2 business, Alton seniors. Should only take a couple of minutes. That'd be number four, but is it so? Alton High School seniors, which is a high school. So move, Mr. Chairman. This is made to approve the agenda, seconded by Mr. Holt. I'll poll the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Sorry. Does anybody else has anything else they want to add? Poll the board to Mr. Holt. Again?
Bob?
Mr. Holt again?
Yes.
Mr. Horchell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth?
Yes.
Vote to say affirmative.
You got me down as the only vote in once.
This time I'll intervene on the meeting and ask the fire chief, Chief Bodice, to give us an emergency update, management update as of last week from the police chief. So tonight is the, um, fire chief's part of this after it's been a month since we've seen him walk. Chief?
Again, not much has changed since last week when Chief Heath gave you an update. Thank you again for the opportunity to address the board and the members of the community. Last week, Chief Heath provided you with an update of where emergency management team is heading with the town. The hope is to be ready for our public buildings to open again, which is what we're preparing for now. At this time, we are still in the early planning stages. The health and safety of the town employees and the public is our first priority. We are also working with boards and committees to accommodate meetings as resources will allow. This is a slow process as we watch the cases of COVID in New Hampshire and try to follow the governor's orders for reopening. On a more positive note, the basketball court and the tennis facilities have been opened up by the fire station. These, like the picnic tables and the swimming areas, are not able to be cleaned on a regular basis, so that must be noted before any use. Any use of the facility must also adhere to social distancing guidelines. As of June 1st, the daily number of cases of COVID-19 in New Hampshire has been 400 each day. The numbers for the state of New Hampshire appear to be decreasing. It should be noted that this decrease and stabilizing is also in conjunction with a major increase in testing. This, this looks good, uh, this looks like good news for our state as a whole. And on June 15th, the stay-at-home 2.0 order is slated to be finished. The emergency management team will be paying close attention to the newest guidance put out by the state to help reopen our community and our businesses. Please remember that as our economy reopens, social distancing will still need to be in place. Wash your hands often with soapy water or alcohol-based hand sanitizer. Do not cough or sneeze into your hands. Disinfect your workspaces, and when available, wear a face covering. If you have questions or concerns about how Alton is responding to coronavirus, feel free to contact myself, the police chief, or the public health director. For general questions about coronavirus, you can still call the state at 211. Again, the emergency management team thanks the board and the community for their continued support and patience.
Thank you, Chief. Selectmen, do you have any questions for the fire chief?
So there were really nothing new today at today's emergency.
No, there was more. The one was reviewed last week, Thursday.
Okay, and last week, as I recall, we said no 4th of July fireworks and no first craft fair.
First craft fair, no fireworks. Also, the only thing today was the fire. Police chief and the group emergency management team did say postpone the waterski show until August. Then we'll see, we'll see where we're at in August, but everything up till August basically hasn't.
So. Yes, I see recently, I believe the governor, the 15th, it's going to be, the restaurants, for example, in this county are going to be open indoors.
Correct.
Okay. My question is, where are we, where do we stand here, like with this Board of Selectmen's meeting? When is, yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but when, when do you think we could start resuming?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that because in, this is the confusing part, and this is what we're tasked with, taking the governor's information and trying to make it work for the town. Some of the things, I, I don't like saying contradictory, but they are. So, you know, retail spaces can have this many people in them, but there's no, there's still no group settings allowing more than 10 people. So that may change on the 15th, and I'm kind of hoping he goes back to where it was 50 people. And that really helps with a lot of things, so. There is hope, but we really don't know. I, I can say that, you know, expecting a spike after some of the events that we have had, and we haven't really had that spike. With that, we've also pushed for more.
And our numbers are not going to happen.
So things are looking good, and the hope is just to keep it that way and not set ourselves backwards.
So we didn't see a big spike with Memorial Day, everything?
No, I mean, typically it's, we're looking at two weeks. It's been just over a week, and we're looking good, so.
Yeah, if you look at.
But I, I think with that, you're going to find pockets of issues.
Oh, yeah. I think you're going to get that.
Yeah. If you look at the statistics, or the ones I've been looking at on television, it's been in, uh, senior citizen arrest homes or that type of environment.
Yeah, long-term care facilities are getting hit pretty hard.
Those are the new cases, and those are the new deaths the last week or so.
Yeah, most, most of the deaths are there. Not all the cases are coming out of there. There are, there are definitely other cases.
And today, it was zero deaths.
Third, long-term care facilities, two thirds of the deaths.
So don't be putting yourself in a long-term care. I don't know. I'm trying to talk my wife out of putting me in.
Just by the nature of everybody being so close, there's a lot of communal stuff there.
Oh, of course, it's a fine, with the age and everything else.
Anything we can do for you, Chief?
Uh, not at this time. Things seem to be going well, and we appreciate your support. Department is doing great. Our calls are actually coming back up.
As we chatted last week, you got your new side-by-side?
Yes.
Got your trailer?
Yep.
Already had it a couple of times?
Oh, yeah.
First one?
Yeah, I think it does. It seems to be a much smoother, up the mountain, quicker, get up, get down.
Good, and it starts?
And it starts every time.
What do you say?
Um, about four times. Probably a two-week period, so, a handful of training.
Good. That's good work. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We want to skip down to number two on new business, so we even go home?
Well, we do that.
Right here.
If you'd like, if you gentlemen.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, why we got him right here?
Yes, I appreciate it.
Okay, Chief, you're up.
Okay, so as you know, replacement of engine four was approved. That has finally come in. It's built. Um, we had an overlap of the time that that engine was here for people to get trained on it. Now it's time for the old engine to go. The old engine is a 1991, it's an international 4,900, somewhere around $50,000. We've gone, we went online basically to find similar trucks for sale, and we're somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 is what we're seeing. So we'd like to put it out there, try to get some sealed bids, but there's another option out there if you guys are interested in exploring. There's a company called Municipalit, and they kind of take, they don't take the truck, but they take ownership of selling the truck. And they get it out there, they put it out to a lot of places and try to get it sold. They don't charge us. They charge a buyer's fee for the person who finds it and buys it. I would like to try to set a minimum bid of $10,000 on it because I think if we go the extra mile and work, work harder and sell it, we'll get a little bit more for it. In the past, the things we have sold have not gone, you know, we haven't gotten the value out of them. So I, I think if we go this route, we may get a better value.
I got a question for you. We bought a, was it 73? We put it in West Hall?
Yeah.
That truck won't match into anything this truck does? With 73 is a little bit older?
So that truck actually is a little bit better though because of the refurb that's happened. Um, well, this truck here had a pump, part of the pump failed. There's a manifold on top of the pump that comes out, and that got a hole in it. Because it was so close to replacing the truck, instead of sending it out for thousands of dollars worth of repair, we repaired it in-house. We basically put a cap over the, over the top of that manifold is, and then we got it so we were able to recirculate water. So the truck worked, um, but it's an uncertified pump. It hasn't been pump tested. And it wasn't worked on by a pump specialist, so some places may not even be willing to certify it.
So basically you just, um, take everything off the truck?
We'll take all the equipment.
Equipment, then you take all, save all that equipment?
Yep, that's worth, anything that's worth saving, we're going to take. I mean, there's some valves that are leaking and stuff like that that can just stay right on there. But, you know, we'll take everything that's worth saving, all the ancients and drivers. And then we put it out there and try to get the most we can for it. Most likely, somebody will look at a truck like this and take the pump off, take the water tank off, and use it as a truck with a nice PTO on it for some kind of farm use or something like that.
Mr. Holt?
Explain to me again that company you're thinking about.
Um.
Like.
Yep, they're, they're, they're called Municipalit, and they just kind of, they put it out through all the states. And people that are not municipalities can also get in on it. It's not just for municipalities. And they can get it out there, and they can just reach way more people than we ever have. For the most part, we don't reach many people, and I think that's why we, we don't.
That's a problem.
Yeah, we haven't gotten a lot of value out of our trade-ins, out of our resales.
So you, you, you talked about putting a minimum of 10, $10,000?
That's, that's my hope. That's the, between 10 and 15,000 is what we found being sold for now.
So they, they take the paperwork and go out to bid?
Yep.
Give holes?
Yep.
For the 30 days or something?
Um, I think they just put it out there until they get something worth, worth getting.
So if they get more, if they get 15?
So whatever it's sold for, we get, and they charge the buyer a separate fee for buying it. Yeah. They don't charge us anything.
If you put it out for under, uh, for 10,000, and they only get nine?
Well, that's up, and that's up to you guys how you want to do that. I mean, we, I just suggested 10. If you want to go a lower minimum, we can. I just don't want to see us put it out there only at $1,500 for it.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is that the end of the timeframe, the bid is not at what we want for a base.
Right.
A minimum.
They'll let us know, and they'll give us an option.
Oh, we don't have to sell it?
Right.
Gentlemen, any other questions for the chief? All right, do I have a motion to allow the chief to either put it out for sealed bid or go with Municipalit?
I move, uh, Mr. Chairman, that we allow the chief to go over that municipal bid process. Second, I feel that you'll get a much lighter.
Oh, before you go there, you're going to put a dollar amount of that motion?
A minimum of $10,000.
Paid by Mr. Holt to allow the chief to put it in this bid on the engine four for a minimum bid of $10,000.
Seconded.
Thank you, my Mr. McDonald. Any further discussion? I'll poll the board. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Norchell?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I just want to let you know with everything going on in our crazy world right now, especially in our United States of America, I want to let you know that if our department has the Board of Selectmen's. Do we have you?
Yep. Thank you. That was a great shot.
What we've had.
No.
And along with that, I would like to put a motion out. We also have our police departments back.
Yeah.
Yes. We have a good crew, I believe and I trust. And I just want to let them know that with everything going on in our world today in our country. You. Very nice job.
We definitely thank you very much for everything you guys have been doing, all the work, especially with over 19 and the extra miles that you guys have gone.
Thank you. Welcome, sir. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening. You too. All right, gentlemen, we're going to go back up to announcements. There is none. We do have one submission of public comment. She did. That's for the Jonas. I'll go to the first one. That's the second one?
Okay.
All right. First one to the Board of Selectmen's from Nancy L. Downs, 129 Gero, gone in New Hampshire. And she, Mary got the letter. I drove by to the scenic view area near Mount Major and all recently and realized there is no scenic view anymore. Trees at the bottom of the embankment have grown so high that they've taken away the formerly beautiful view. The trees I'm referring to are mostly probably located on private property at the bottom of the embankment. I'm thinking that a possible solution would be to ask those property owners for permission to cut down or trim those trees. I believe the property owners may agree to this if they know that the town of Alton will pay for it. I don't want to sound permissible, but I believe eventually this problem of excess tree growth at the scenic view will affect Alton's economy to some level. For example, as much as I love Alton, I will not be driving to Alton again until the scenic view is restored. It's one of my favorite places in New Hampshire. I'm sure I'm not alone in thinking that something has to be done to restore the beautiful view. Sincerely, Nancy L. Downs. The second one, Nancy L. Downs. As a follow-up to yesterday's letter, I have thought about another possible solution to this problem and wanted to share it. Just wondering if it's been verified that the private property owners at the bottom of the embankment where the trees are taking root refuse to allow the town or the state of New Hampshire to trim or remove the trees that are blocking the scenic view? If so, possible solution, could the issue be referred to your legal department? Possible solution, could something be legally written into the deeds of the privately-owned properties at the bottom of the embankment to assert that the town of Alton and the state of New Hampshire would have access to periodic maintenance for any overgrowth or vegetation, taking root on those properties in order to retain the designated scenic view? Like, Mary sent this to me. I did call her and ask her to call the New Hampshire DOT District 3 office because it was done, I think about five, eight years ago by the prisoners. They were down in the embankment, so a lot of it has grown up. The state right away goes almost to the very bottom of that bank.
Right.
Enough.
Very low.
Yep. So if the state has been calling this, I feel that we should send let them know of this issue so they can get in contact with the New Hampshire DOT, which might have a little more pull getting that embankment done. We should send a letter also. As far as giving the government legally to go and take people's trees down, I do not agree with that because that's a staking possession by eminent domain without no reason. If it, you know, the tree owner, the owner is not at the bottom, if some of that's on their property, that would be up to the property owners to do that. I, I would find it hard to test for the town of Alton to send me a letter saying, "Trim my trees."
It'd be some piss.
So, and plus, there's not many in the budget this year to do anything. Private property owners, could we do anything on private property? The state does not allow us to do that. I don't need the governing laws.
Oh, and they allowed them to cut them when they put the road in in the 70s, so they might allow them again. You never know.
What I would suggest, we send a letter to the Department of Transportation, to our state reps, and see if they could look into this and see if those, the trees that can't be trimmed are on state property. This, Horchell?
I, I'm really surprised that this hasn't come up more every year. This is something I have mentioned for the last 10 years, and especially on 28 as well. Um, and Route 11. This should have been something on a regular basis, should have been maintained for the last 25, 30 years.
Probably got them logged up there. When they first did the road, they logged all through on the west side. And that shortened that canopy out. But now that canopy is taken over, and that's up, I mean, that's a lot of, some of it's town property, and then it's coast to private property. I mean, I don't think they'd be big enough to log yet.
But the, the road back there was put in 1970, started in 1969, completed in the fall of 1972. Over the years, they have trimmed the one in Gilbert on Route 11. That's been totally overgrown. It's on private property. So, I mean, like I said, I, I would like to see us send a letter to the New Hampshire DOT on this to Division 3, question that they look into it, and also to our state reps.
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
I, I also, I agree. Everything's been said. I'd also, I think we should write this woman a letter also explaining what you've just said and advising her to contact our state rep.
She was, she was instructed to contact DOT. I don't know what Mary said about the state reps, but. Mr. Whitman?
I can tell you, my first year as a selectman, my assignment, one of my assignments was Lake Region Planning Commission, before I managed to talk the rest of the selectmen to get us out of it. But I, I, I attended a few of their meetings, including a banquet. And, um, the whole, the closest roads to the lake all the way around are supposed to be a scenic byway. And I can tell you right now, the attitude of the Lake Region Planning Commission, that night that they discussed it, that was that the whole thing's a joke. There's never been maintain anywhere around the lakes. So remember that discussion specifically.
Well, the only thing I can say in defense of the state of New Hampshire that might be talking about in school. You remember about 10 years ago, there was a big landslide up on Route 11 just where the road narrows from going 55, 40 miles an hour during heavy rains. If you've ever looked down that embankment, which we had in a very bad accident last year, there was, gentlemen, flew over that embankment and landed in a tree. That embankment is very steep, and it could be that they saw erosion down there, and that's why they let some of the growth come up because if that bank didn't have let go, all the houses on that area would surely be taken out. So I, I don't know the reasons why, but it's also the things, the state does not cut back the sides of the roads like they used to. When I worked for them, it was some brush cutters and some hand sites. Now they take tractors with mowers on them, and they sometimes kind of destroy the landscape.
That's my point, our work.
But anyways, um, it's all right. You gentlemen, the consensus of the board, the town administrators send a letter to the New Hampshire DOT District 3 office, also to our state reps, and respond to this woman's letter.
Do we think we should send it to the scenic byway committee still down there?
We could. I don't want to say the governor's office because this answer for right now, from the last time we wrote to the governor's office, we never heard that from them.
They have a committee that does this, so we could, we could get a letter into that.
We asked the town administrator to send all, all possible parties and sign it on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
The town administrator signing it. We don't need to all sign the letter. We can sign on behalf of the board.
And I agree with Bob, maybe we should send the lady a letter as well.
So she knows. First one. Okay. At this time, that's all I have for submission of public info, so we have no questions. On the new business tax assessment website information discussing. Gentlemen, later on, we'll be in a possible meeting with Rob. Would you just like to have Rob come upstairs and sit with us tonight if he feels comfortable?
Yeah, I'm concerned. Most of us have never even seen him.
Yeah. Shame on you.
Be nice to him.
I had such a conversation so far with him.
It'd be nice to see him and see what he looks like so we know our town employee.
Well, we rang with Rob. If I could bring up number four, because it'll only take a few minutes while we're waiting for him to come upstairs. I was approached by a few of the high school parents in the graduating class of 2020. The school did up this banner. I'll take it out for you if you want me to. But the few of the parents and the seniors have asked if the Board of Selectmen were entertaining the idea of putting it up, having it put up on the front lawn out here, celebrating the class of 2020 seniors. They'll put it up. They'll install it. They're not asking us to.
Again?
Yes, sir.
Turn on the town hall?
Yes, sir. And I told them I would bring it before the meeting tonight. I would not make any promises. This is about as wide as it is, and it goes up to pick, the parents would install it with the direction of the code enforcement officer.
Is there a timeline that on it?
They were stating for one week. I believe that's what Mr. McLoeb asked before, was one week.
I believe it's a day. I'll be congratulating you.
I knew you were going to do that.
Probably congratulations, class.
Celebrating Alton here, Alton, at Alton. Somebody grab this one up for me?
Oh, it is though. That's what he looks like.
Come on.
Hi, guys.
I'm Rob.
Oh, very good, very good.
That one's very nice. In all my own glory.
I don't care what I think, but I'm, so. Very good.
Looks good.
Okay.
Absolutely, definitely.
Yes, I'm. No problem. Mr. McDonald said he would touch base with me tomorrow morning, so. If we could just have Mr. Devers go outside where he's normally the employee that goes outside more often than anybody. And if we could just get ahold of him, where can you set up?
Let Joe and I be quiet.
My daughter just graduated from Middle Lakes yesterday, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now the bill's stat.
So I don't believe I need a motion on that, gentlemen. I can just have a consensus of the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes, definitely.
Yes. Mr. Wentworth, yes. I'll let him know in the morning. So now back to you, Rob. I'm glad you could join us tonight here.
Thanks.
And some of us like to feel they haven't seen you, so.
Yeah.
This is Rob.
Here I am.
Well, it's the first time I've seen that, too.
I hope you.
This world we're living in right now.
Well, it is.
A little bit to what Rob is, uh, send us a letter. Up with us tonight. He has a few issues with the Vision Appraisal 6.5 camera system. It's currently unsupported in what he would like to do over the next year to try to get everything up and running to where it should be. Thinking that that's where we were headed to begin with, but apparently it's been dragging a little.
It seems to have been, yeah. What, the problem really is in switching to Avatar, which it appears the town purchased in 2018. Uh, it's really difficult to bring a camera system. Camera is an acronym for computer-assisted mass appraisal. Uh, it's very difficult to bring a camera system online without a revaluation. They, both systems will create a value. They're more or less similar. Square footage is square footage, but they don't perform the duties exactly the same. In a nutshell, uh, it really behooves the town to have a full revaluation of property, which we will probably be scheduling for 2021, uh, to bring a camera system online and have it functioning properly. Uh, right now, it seems that the camera system, the, the new Avatar camera system was in the middle of being reprogrammed to match the settings in the existing vision system, which in my experience isn't really the way you want to go about trying to do that. You're never going to get the, the values to be exactly the same. They'll be similar, but they won't be exactly the same. And so when you do a revaluation of the town, essentially what you're doing is revaluing all properties, notifying all properties of their new assessment, and you're basing the values on, uh, market values within the last ideal year, two years, if it's a smaller town. I think Alton will have enough sales to, to look at one year. One of the issues that I'm having, and mostly with that, uh, notice that I sent you, the vision system has not been supported since 2018. It's still functioning properly, but if it malfunctions, we don't have support. We're not paying Vision for support right now. And their website is essentially updating some parts of the values. An automated process that's happening on the backend. And having spoken about this with Josh, I would like to discontinue that process. And in the short term, post all the values online, uh, in a spreadsheet form, PDF, and also have a notice basically that says we're converting to the Avatar system. When that system is up, we'll be back online with the full property cards. In the meantime, please contact the town assessing office for, uh, for copies of assessing cards, and we'll provide them. Uh, but I think it's, um, not the best policy to be using partially updated information. I don't want to lead the public to faulty conclusions about value or if ownership information hasn't been updated. I would prefer to have the, the public contact me directly so that I can provide up-to-date ownership information and that they're not, not receiving possibly the wrong information. that they're not receiving possibly the wrong information.
That's the nutshell.
Everything was going to be done. Everything was going to be turned into Avatar by two thousand nineteen. Fortunately, that did not happen. Here it is, two thousand twenty. Selectmen were just told that the State of New Hampshire wanted us to do a revow this year. It's late to do a revow, plus nobody was budgeted. Because the board of selectmen was led to believe that the assessing office could do the revow themselves. At least that's the way I took it, the impression that I got last year. So now here we are at this point. Rob had sent a letter off to the State of New Hampshire requesting that they change our year periods to
The zeros and fives of what you're on now would be the sevens. I believe that what Tom did in two thousand seventeen was a full revaluation of the town. That would reset sevens and twos.
At this point, we don't have support for one company. We're paying another company.
And not utilizing.
Utilizing to the fullest our advantage. I myself feel that we got to get moving on this and let's get it done, because property values in this town are changing, especially off the lake. Your local neighborhoods' values are a lot higher than what the town is assessed at. I'm not saying I'm always happy that the town goes out and does a hundred percent assessment, but the backline areas, they're running, I'm going to say, good twenty to thirty percent off. I got three appraisals. I can show that. So I don't know how you gentlemen feel, so I'll go around the table.
We started this back with Tom. We put a lot of money into it back then, when Tom was here. We get this all swapped out.
So this is where I would say that updates every month will need to be done on certain issues like this. So I'll be looking to Liz next month, have you bring, bring you in and say, where are we with this? We can have better updating where things are going. We don't pay the updates on the board. We use someone to take care of anything. Everything's running smooth. So certain projects, and I think now, this is a good point, where we start saying, all right, it's been two months. Where are we at with this project? Or this is a month. Where are we at with the timeline, timeframe? When will project start? When will they end? I think this would be a good.
So we've got quarterly updates.
Well, I don't.
Because I know things take time to get going.
I know, but that sometimes pushes it on a certain project. And then quarterly, we can get busy, especially during budget season, so if you get about it, or if Liz does, it's just, you know, I think I had to bring this up last quarter. Here it is the second quarter.
Yeah.
So that way there, we're not caught off guard like we are. Because to me, this is embarrassing. Because we're led to believe this was all being done last year.
We put a lot of money into it.
Yeah, I agree. My only concern is how Rob is overwhelmed with the public calling.
I won't be, I'm prepared for it. I'm accustomed to providing that level of service to people. I've maintained websites in other towns before. All of this is par for the course. And it's a short-term solution to the problem at any rate. We will be online with Avatar as soon as possible. It requires us transferring the value methods. In other words, right now, the camera system that's generating the values is Vision six point five. I have to do a revow of the town and get the Avatar camera system generating values. At that point, we can switch to the Avatar online distribution, which the town has already contracted with them to provide. So in the end, that will be seamless. As soon as the board has accepted the twenty twenty-one values and we've moved on to the Avatar camera system, the online presence will be instant. So all this really is, is basically a stopgap until we can get the revaluation complete.
No, I think it's important. I agree. We're behind. We thought we were getting this done in two thousand nineteen. It's important to get back on track and get on where the value should be. I think it's important to move forward.
I'm the green guy on the block here, so I'm not privy to all the old problems. But what you make, what you say here tonight makes sense. Assessor, believe me, by a long shot. I've dealt with you on a couple of issues so far over the phone, and you handled yourself very well. Wish you luck. Keep up the good work. You're in a little bit of a mess here, maybe, but I think we can get us out of it.
I can identify it, and yeah, I'm certain we'll get, we'll be back on track by about this time next year. I think we will be concluding the revow probably in, I'd like to be done in time to have the MS one done in September. Values will be effective April first of twenty twenty-one. We'll do our informal hearings and be through with the values and be ready to present to the board in time for the second tax billing next year. It'll be smooth sailing, in my opinion, after that. Once we're on to the Avatar system, moving forward, it'll just be maintaining the values.
My question to you now is, you go online, click in an address or click in a name. You're going to become obsolete then, once you do this?
It will be removed entirely, and what you'll have is a spreadsheet that can be searched the same way as any other. In other words, you'll be able to type in, what you won't be able to see, and the thing that's missing most is the format of the property card in the sketch. The sketches right now are not transferring properly on the automated process. In other words, what's happening right now is a function of our server here and Vision server. It's an automated process that essentially is still operating because Vision hasn't discontinued. In other words, we don't have any support with them, and they're under no obligation to maintain that information. It's an automated process that's just happening, and I would prefer not to rely on that. I don't feel comfortable.
We were led to believe all this provision with Avatar would be changed over here right now.
I can't answer to that. I wasn't here then. Yeah, all I can say is I'm doing my best to get it there as smoothly as I possibly can.
A lot to take on hold.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the request from the town assessor, Rob Judd, dated April? That was April thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
To stop the absence of the support of the Vision camera system, go through a spreadsheet. So he can move on with Avatar.
So.
May to approve Rob Judd's letter, April thirtieth, twenty twenty, move on to a spreadsheet of the assessments versus using system we can have now placed. Do I have any further discussion?
Yeah, it took us this long to get the?
I saw, I said.
Took us this long from April thirtieth to get this on the board?
May I add just one more thing? Just that this is very specific to just the information that's presented to the public on the town website.
That they can still go to Colin Slesser's office to get the.
Right, correct.
Mr. Holt, you got a question?
Do I get an answer first?
I thought you did.
No?
All right, go ahead.
The April thirtieth, that's when you sent this to our, for the, to come on to a meeting?
That's when I presented it to Liz.
So long as it's to get it on to the agenda.
I don't remember receiving it until thirty.
Okay.
I remember seeing it. So maybe.
All I know is that I, you know, the request went, and here we are talking about, but in the end, that doesn't make much difference. Make it right as soon as possible, really.
Plus, when the selectmen's district is having weekly meetings, the intent was to have urgency, stuff pressing issues, urgent issues, and we couldn't fit everything onto every agenda, so we kind of had to spread it out a little bit, which I think I mentioned one or two meetings ago.
So, Ms. O'Shea, could you look over there and see what July thirtieth, what date that falls on? Nothing. I'm trying to push it away.
That is going to be on Thursday.
All right, so what's that, Monday?
The twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. So Rob, could you come back at the twenty-seventh for a quick meeting with us to give us an update?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's our agreement, gentlemen.
Yep.
Further discussion? Hold the board, Ms. O'Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Wyndworth?
Yes.
Mr. Holt? Yes. Rob, unfortunately, I thought we could let you go home tonight, but I have taken one item off the consent. I'm going to recommend to take one item off the consent agenda when we get there.
Absolutely.
You're welcome to stay.
You can stay right here if you'd like. The next item is the Highway Department's six-wheel dump truck accessory bill and bid award. Do we have Mr. Roberts on the phone?
Yes, sir.
How are you doing tonight, sir?
Very good, thank you.
Wanted to let you know, I had a customer come to my store today. Not often when a customer comes in the store today. He says, who do I contact in the town about the Highway Department? He says, well, you can send a letter to the board of selectmen and to the Highway Department. And I said, is there something I can help with? He said, I just wanted to send them a letter of commendation for all the hard road work you were doing on Tom Road. So the letter will be forthcoming, but I wanted to let you know that I got a taxpayer coming in to commit to the work, and your crew has done on Tom Road.
Thank you very much.
Start with that first, and then I will move on to what you talked about. The three bids you've got for completion of the six-wheel dump truck, please see below breakdown. I'm going to let you start first before I turn it over to the other four members to give your explanation why you want to go where you want to go, and definitions of why you want to be where you want to be at.
Okay. So we've opened all the bids, and you see them before you, and basically, high bid was Donovan Truck, Viking Plow was next, and HP Fairfield. So we know a sister town, dealt with HP Fairfield last year, and had some issues. Delivery date was one of them. The other thing is incompletion, and just general issues. Plus, it's not quite the equipment we were looking for. We were looking for the Monroe sander or something back into the other sander, which was highway. So we investigated a little bit further in the second bid, and in the second bid, we had the highway sander. We checked some of the references. They seemed to be very good. HP Fairfield, of course, was really good. I mean, not HP Fairfield, Donovan was really good, but really kind of high. We dealt with them last year. They did an excellent job. So that's kind of where I stood when I gave you the number two in the bidding sequence. So that's my recommendation.
All right. You have, for references, you had Tom Wolf World listed, Tom Epping, and Tom London. Am I correct?
On which one? I'm sorry. I didn't have a.
On your proposal of this sixty-four, nine hundred ninety thousand dollars, sixty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. On references you put down in the paperwork, or they did, Tom Wolf World, Tom Epping, Tom London.
Yeah, those are some of the people that we've been talking to, plus other people that we've known that's done Viking. And we did Viking years ago and had no issues with the Viking product.
These, so my next question to you is ninety to one hundred and twenty days. Is there a penalty clause if this truck is not ready in one hundred and twenty days?
We didn't have one. We understood that our sister community has actually put one in. We've never put a penalty clause into ours, but I understand our sister town did.
Do you, when will it, when would the truck be delivered to? Do we know?
No, actually, it's, all has to do with COVID nineteen. Everything's slowed down a little bit. We're hoping to have it by the end of April, or the end of May. Now we're into June. They say it's coming. That's all I can say. You know, it's the build thing. Soon as we get the chassis, then we'll deliver it to Viking.
So if you get the chassis at the first of July, you're looking at possibly October being completed, then time for snow season.
Yeah, and last year, we got it really late, and we ended up getting it after the first of the year.
But if they cannot, if we get it to them, they do not hold one hundred and twenty days. That's why I'm just wondering, maybe in the future, going forward, we have some something in there, two percent or five percent off the bill.
And that's something we could look into in future contracts, that we could, we could deal with it that way. I've never, in anything I can recall, I don't think the town of Alton has ever put a penalty clause in on completion dates.
All right, well, I'm going to settle down here for a minute, turn over, I'm going to look at Mr. McDonald first.
Kenny, is this going to match our plow systems that we have already, the sander and stuff and the plows?
Well, the sander is a highway sander, and that's what we've been trying to stay with right along, and we ended up with a Monroe last year. We're trying to get these oddballs out of the way, because the stock that we keep, like, we keep chains, and believe it or not, the sprockets are just a little bit different from one sander to the other. They're almost specific, so you can't universally use them back and forth. That's why we're kind of pushing to try to keep it in one thing. That's like buying the internationals. You know, now we're going to all internationals. Now we have a mechanic that deals with international and deals with, you know, international parts and whatnot. Unfortunately, you know, this stuff is all over the board, and Viking just got into highway sanders. But I started with highway sanders when I started here, and yeah, we've worked with them for a lot of years. So I mean, I don't have any issues with them. I'd prefer to have highway over everything right now.
Well, I'm just wondering, because I know when we discussed it quite a while ago, that we were trying to get it all the same, so we didn't have to screw around with all the pads.
Right. It's, it's just tough to get certain dealerships to be able to obtain certain sanders.
Right. I'm just wondering if it's worth looking at the sanders we got and seeing how much more we ask and we match.
Agreed. That's why I recommended the Viking as well, because they have the E twenty twenty, which is a highway sander. That's what we have. Yes, it matches several of them.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, no questions on this one?
Ken, Paul, just curious on your information you got from Fairfield. You said you had a lack of information on the equipment they were supplying with their.
Yeah. I'm sorry. It was in their bid form. It was like a half-page document. It wasn't really detailed, and there was a lot of issues that were, need to be checked off to agree upon. It was like, yeah, we'll build it, and then that's about all they say. They don't say anything else, like, you know, we check off, we're going to do one hundred and twenty amp batteries, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, you know, kind of tone them to the line. I call it almost an incomplete bid.
Okay.
You know, we're looking for details, because we want to hold them to the details.
Right.
Paul, anything else?
No, that's it, Ken. Thank you.
Again, Danny, I'm sorry, we have incomplete information. Start off with, if you read our personnel policy, we're supposed to get a copy of the bid proposal for approval, which I believe did not happen, best of my knowledge. In your reasoning, the reason I'm not recommending Fairfield is because their bid was lacking detail. Now, I see nothing in your backup here in writing the references. Only equipment listed here in your backup is the Viking equipment, which is good equipment. Also, they listed is of, the detail on equipment, they listed is of lesser quality than Viking. I don't even know, I made my living buying this equipment, Kenny. I don't even know what equipment Fairfield's better. You make a statement here with absolutely no backup tonight. You said in here, you also have spoken to other municipalities recently had trucks built at Fairfield. And there's different reasons you can have problems with a vendor with a truck. Possibly truck got there late when it wasn't supposed to. It was supposed to have been in a certain time, and I don't know all those specifics either. I do know that I have done business with Donovan Truck, HP Fairfield, and I've had no problem with either one of those over the years. I also know that Fairfield is now located in Hartington, New Hampshire. It's taken over fights, one of Fight's old buildings. And it's quite a big operation now compared to their facility they used to have in Concord. I also like to keep the business in New Hampshire. Viking is, I believe, they're a Louis than Maine, if I'm not mistaken. And the difference in the bid is two thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Without having more information, I would like to motion, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move, we table this until we can get more backup information.
We do these bids. He is the supervisor for the Highway Department. They go through these bids and recommend what we've got. Did what he was supposed to, send out three bids. We put our faith in that Highway Department in its front very well over the years. And it saved this town a lot of money, and we put our faith in him, tell us, okay, we want to go with the bid too, that's why he sent this bid up here for us to look at. And we put our faith in him to do that job. Now, he did what he was supposed to do, was send all three bids out, he, he come in with the three bids. We're not here to pick through all three bids, we're here to take his recommendation as a highway supervisor that works on that equipment day in, day out. And that's, and I think that we rely on him for this, that's what he gets paid to do. I don't think it's fair to say we have to have all the bids packets in here, then we, then we all should have been at the bid opening.
I go towards Phil next, have you got anything about this one?
Michelle. Mr. Holt, you're on the floor again.
I understand where you're coming from, uh, but he is not picking the low bid, he's picking a bid that is more money. All right, and the issue of the specifications. You read on page seventy-one of our personnel policy, it spells it right out, the department head shall prepare a set of specifications and submit, and submit them to the governing body for approval. Which hasn't been done, and it hasn't been done in the past. Because I've attended quite a few selectmen's meetings, and this has not been done. Now, it's in the policy, it should be adhered to, get it out of it, get it out of it. But, I mean... And if, and, and, and I'm not questioning his decision, but what I'm questioning is, I don't see it. And I'm sorry, if, if he was in here saying Fairfield gets the bid for sixty-two-four, I would say, okay, that's the low price. But this is not, he's picking a higher price, and I need justification through spending more of taxpayers' money. Like you, and on that issue.
We have done this, we just approved a higher bid than what the low bid was on...
Was on the, uh...
Side-by-side.
Side-by-side.
It was the trailer.
We took the middle bid, because that's what the fire department thought was the best for the town.
And I also...
Kenny thinks it's the best for the town. Now, the bid specs, we, he came in front of the board and asked us, and we said, yeah, we have the right to make up these specs and then put them out to bid. He came in front of this board and asked, now, one board member asked for the bid specs to come back to this board first, we gave him permission to put their bid specs out.
I believe we gave him permission, Mr. Whitman, to develop this. Because I, I... We gotta stop following it, we even said that in the past, we said it on the fire department, we also said it on the fire department one, and I voted against that also. And I, I have a motion on the floor, have a second.
Do you state your motion again?
Yes, my motion on the floor is to table this, so we can get the justification in writing. The justification in here for the one he wants to buy, but this, it, it, his wording, I hate to say this word, Kenny, but it's, it's basically lip service.
What are you looking for, more for definition, exactly why he wants to go to the middle one, certain, critiquing HP Fairfield's bid against?
Yes, I, I might like to see a spreadsheet. Bender one, vendor two, vendor three, did they meet the qualifications? He's got a sheet in here on, I, I guess this is Vikings, and he's got the, all the bid specs, and it says, yes, 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 yes. But I don't see one in here for any of the, the other two vendors. Normally, you give a spreadsheet out, especially when you're trying... More money. Does anybody willing to second Mr. Holt's, uh, motion? See if I can get a second for discussion.
A question name.
I just want to know if I can...
Get back on the discussion.
Have a second, so we can get the time. Table this until we get... Discussion and the spreadsheet is why we're going to a middle bid, not the high bid, but the middle bid for the low bid. I'll open up, and second my Mr. Whitman, I'll open it up for discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Well, I just think that's why we pay Kenny, and yes, we did say it could go out to bid, he could draw up the specs and go out to bid. And we could have Liz draw it, but the more we kick this can down the road, the less we're gonna have a truck plowing this winter. Two thousand dollars, it's worth having this truck shipped here, so we have a truck for the winter. And, and if we want to go forward, and when the, when they say they want to go up the bid, we can put the order, and them bid specs come in front of us. But you shouldn't stop a bid that's out there, when this thing takes a year to get. And stop it now before winter and say, wow, okay, we'll get the plow truck next year.
Michelle.
Clarify, Bob, what you're looking for is exactly... And the explanation of exactly what the equipment was, item for item for item. You're looking for Fairfield and Donovan to do the same, the same thing, explaining exactly what they're using for equipment, compare apples to apples. Am I right in that? That's what you're looking for.
A spreadsheet, see?
A spreadsheet like the one that we have for Viking, that's what you're saying. So each and every one explains exactly what they're...
What specs they're in?
With, with the specs, with the, what they're using for the wing, what they're using for the, for the plow, what they're using for the spreader, so each and every one of them explains the equipment.
Prepare apples for apples.
So, Mr., Mr., I got the floor, Joe. Mr. Roberts, one of your page letters in all the highway department, general information is on that page. That's it, six-wheel dump truck, ten-foot dump body, ten-foot by forty-eight inch by sixty inches, says yes for the left foot. You see that?
Yeah, I don't have that, that, I don't have the bid sheets in front of me.
Okay, so we only have that one. Okay, so anyways, we only have that one from Viking that's answered all those yeses. I think what Bob's...
Yeah, Donovan, and Donovan did as well, but, you know, just, just to mention, Mr. Chairman, is that... When all these bids are open, they sit in Mary's office, anybody can go in and get a copy of them or look at them at any time, they're all public knowledge. You know, um, and again, you know, if you want us to set up spreadsheets and stuff, I'm, I'm happy to ask my secretary to start setting up spreadsheet, and I'll send you all the specs that we've been doing. For the last twenty-six years, and happy to give it to all of you. You know, there's nothing here, there's, there's nothing here to hide, we're doing best we can for the Town of Alton.
And I, and I understand that, I appreciate that, but I'm gonna start, Mr. McDonald has something to say now before I go back to you.
I think too, is we're gonna go by the policy, and in your motion, that the bids come in front of the selectmen again, like they used to. And we'll award it. I don't think, I think that we, if we're gonna do that, then we should make it mandatory that we get all the bids here.
There's nothing in here that says that.
Yes, we used to, the selectmen...
I don't care what we used to do, I'm going by the... Supposed to operate under, right or wrong?
Right.
That we are, that we are to follow, and we haven't done it in the past. If we said the last time...
That's, that's not true.
Our department did that when they built the truck, that last, the engine that we just got, the replacing engine for, they did, they brought that up before, also... Brought the bid specs before us on the new ambulance that we got last year, it was Ram, so they did bring that before the board of selection. I, I, excuse me, because I will say that it hasn't been done in the past, so all I'm, I'm saying is, if the board wants to, the future, policy is to adhere by, but it can be waived at times. It's not the Bible, it is not far, and the board of selection have raised the way policy before. Vote it on, when... Oh, let me go back to Mr. Holt, are you done with your?
No, because...
Wait, okay.
When we give him permission to put, to set up the bids and put them out, and we get this bid like this, and we voted to do that, that gave permission, that waived that policy.
I, I will agree with you on that, Mr. Holt.
Well, I, this, I didn't mean we did it all the time, but in the past, we have heard of the issue. It, it has waved that policy. And it's not working the, the right way here, I'm sorry.
Michelle.
Well, what I've got to say about this is something that Virgil pointed out earlier. Just gonna reiterate that, and that's, I don't know all the equipment and material. I don't run this equipment or material, do this, our road agent does. He's the professional that has to set up these equipment, use this equipment, and have his men do this, so I have to trust the road agent. And to look at the equipment, I think, yes, it's important that we see the comparisons of the different materials being used. But it's more important to understand what the, what the agent is saying, what his recommendation is. That's important to me as much as it is having the information in front of me, which I have no idea of what is better than the other. So, I am still gonna go with the recommendation of road agent on, or any of the departments, when I look at these spreadsheets. But I think it is, Bob has a point, we should have comparable apples to apples on each and every one of the items that are bid on. That's basically what I've got to say.
Roberts, I got, uh, one more question. You did not design the specs of this all on your own, I believe you work with your mechanic when you do these, correct?
Yeah, we put these together over years and years, because when we find a failure in something, we change the bid specs to the next truck. I'll give you light examples, uh, we decided we'd put Rhino Liner on the outside of the pickup trucks to save the rocker panels and everything, and then now we're doing fluid film to everything. We learned over a period of time, every time we do it through experience, we've, we've changed things. The other thing is, you know, there's a paragraph within the bid specs that says, the selectmen have the right to reject any and all bids for any reason whatsoever.
Right.
So, and my recommendation was because of comments from a sister town on what was going on with theirs and whatnot. HP Fairfield, I'd have been happy to give it to them if it wasn't for those comments from a sister town.
I believe we had the same discussion last year about HP Fairfield, if I'm not mistaken, because I remember hearing it, because they were waiting here for their product.
Yeah, they were having big issues last year with the, with that problem, that, again, arose this year when we said we were, we were putting things out the bid, and... The sister town actually mentioned something to me about it.
Is there any further discussion, John?
On the one side, follow the policy, as Bob is saying, I don't know how long it would be to have the information before us, could it be by our next meeting, I don't know. But on the other side, I wouldn't know what I was looking at anyway, but there's a couple of members of this board know a little bit more about this kind of equipment than I do.
Well, I think probably the only one that, my understanding right now of the conversation that comes in there is, oh, I have some understanding of it, but not enough, I am not a highway mechanic of big trucks, I have the small diesel truck.
Twenty-eight years' experience.
Oh, and Mr. McDonald's another one, but... Kevin? It's just one rule. Don't have to have information, don't have to know about equipment, to read a spreadsheet, a spreadsheet will show you. You don't have to know if the plow's got a sixteen-eighth floor in it, if it says, this one says, yes, it does, this one says, yes, it does, this one says, no, it don't, no, it doesn't, okay. It, that's, that's what I'm asking for, you don't have to be knowledgeable, you have not to read, that's what I'm...
No on the spreadsheet. Oh, if they're not driving a Pacific piece of equipment, that's, that would be a no right off the bat.
Okay. I also change these bids from coming in and stuff because of the, for a while there was micromanaging it. That over quick, because you took all that power away from the people that have the knowledge to do it, and then the way they wanted things built, and they weren't getting the things that they needed. And that was one of the things why the, all the bids stopped coming in and us going through them.
I, I depend on the information that I get by the department heads that use this equipment, no matter which department, every single day. Now, if it was lumber, house building, lumber materials, furnaces, yes, I can weigh in on all that, I'm not a heavy equipment operator, nor do I try to pretend that I know a lot about... I plow, but I plow the pickup truck.
That's when they, when they wanted the backup, all of a sudden the backup showed up, because they bought it.
Conversation you between the two of you.
All right.
Or any other discussion?
Chairman, I have a thing with him. This is like the second time recently, find ourselves not following the, the policy. And saying, well, okay, this time we won't, but in the future we will. Maybe we really seriously need to look at the policy.
Well, that, that was my next thing after I called for both of us. Or any other further discussion on this item, on the Alton Highway Department? Bid for the standard, the dump body, and the plow and the wing. There is a motion by Mr. Holt, it was the second, enable this until later date, as it gets spreadsheet. Call for a vote, for a discussion? I'll fold the board, Mr. Holt. Whitman?
No, but I really think we...
That's the last one. Michelle? Holt? Wentworth, no. How does everyone need a motion to approve the request of the Alton Highway Department to award? We show a six-wheel dump truck, blow for the breakdown, Viking Kai side, sixty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
Second.
Motion is paid by Ruben Wentworth, approve the Alton Highway Department request for Viking Kai USA, boost the main to, or doing the build to six-wheel chassis, the standard, and the wing and plow. All. Then... Ninety to a hundred-and-twenty days, days of delivery of chassis. Second my Mr. McDonald, further discussion? Kevin? I'm gonna have to vote no on this, because, uh, since I've stated before, I don't think we're representing the taxpayers the right way. I'll have to disagree with you, because Mr. Roberts did, but the board of selection gave permission to back in part-time, putting this out the bid, and also advertising it locally, and receiving three bids to bring it for us. That's my opinion, I'll ask somebody else for any more discussion? Uh, I'll fold the board, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt? Wentworth, yes, both in affirmative, one against, Mr. Holt, four-four. So my next policy is, in the town policy, Mr. Holt has brought, Mr. Roberts, I won't hold on to you any longer, thank you for your time and your input.
I'll be here if you need me.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir.
For this time, Holt has brought up a couple occasions about what's in the policy, that we do not feel it, so I'm gonna ask the town administrator, within the next two weeks, to bring up that section of town policy about bid specs and going out, so we can have discussion on it. We're not gonna follow it, we take it out, if we're gonna follow it, we adhere to it, unless the board of selection at the time requests the department to ask us to waive that policy. This is McDonald.
We have been trying to do this, Bob, about four years now, go over the benefit package and policies. And we keep picking one snippet out, one snippet out, one snippet out, and kick it down the road. Why aren't we setting up either a workshop or something to do, the benefit package, and setting up a workshop to go through the procedural book? So we get this done and start getting it all done, instead of just little snippets here and there every time we have a problem, and we've said it for four years now, we're gonna fix, we're gonna fix this policy, we're gonna fix the benefit law.
As far as the benefit's forthcoming, I believe the town administrator's working on that with Laura, and when it came budget season this year, they were gonna bring it back before us.
But that's, well, that's a little bit late, don't you think? You're doing it in budget season, we're gonna change the benefit package.
That's when the board of selection requested it to be done, because we were in the middle of a budget process last year, we talked about it, and it was too late.
And we were gonna bring it up through the year, we discussed it the year before that, the year before that, and the year before that.
Well, I don't know about all those years, but...
We discussed it right along since I got to the board.
Town administrator, could you enlighten me here a little bit on this?
So we are working on it, when we can, during this state of emergency, where everyone is probably ten times as busy as they were, and we hope to bring it forward.
So, if you gentlemen have concerns of certain, I mean, the reason I'm bringing up what I did, Virgil, was we have a selectman who has a concern on it, I feel it needs to be addressed, it's a valid health inform...
Oh, that's...
Valid concerns, so what I like to do is start having the town administrator, if you have certain section of town policy you want, rather, give her a note, so she can put it on the agenda. I'm not gonna put six or eight of them on the agenda, though, because we're, right now, we're supposed to keep our meetings short. So if we do a couple, I have no problem with that.
I'd love to do this the way we do it at planning board. She gets us the policy book. We take it home, we mark whatever we want, whatever we think needs to be looked at. Then you bring it back and we'll do one or two every meeting until we're done with it. We'll change it, we'll discuss it, and fix it that way. So at least we're working on it instead of.
Let her know what you want to bring up. So she can inform the other board members what you wanna bring up so they can study that particular part that you have a concern. So when we come into the meeting, in case they don't feel there was an issue with that part, they have to go back and research what you're discussing about. So if they have it in hand, at least they might have some idea of why is he bringing this up. They might be able to look at it, reading through it better, that might change their mind on certain things. So if we can do that, that would be great. I have no problem.
Liz, can you get us all copies of the policies? Because the way we do it on planning board is you, the nine of, seven of us.
I like it on planning board. I don't agree with the planning board anyplace. But I, my way is all the planning board is open. The government should not tell me what I can do in my property.
Well, the way we do it.
That's how I feel.
The way we do it is everybody takes it home and highlights it. And then we sit down and we hash it out.
And I understand that, and that's great. Everybody else on board with this? Yeah?
Yes.
All right. Well, Mr. Holt. What do you expect from us? I expect you, well, get your personnel policy. I know mine's at my store somewhere. I have, because I don't read it every week. So I'm gonna look at it, the certain section of the personnel policy, whether it's benefits or whether it's the way bid procedures go out, the way town hall is functioning, the hours of operation. I want you to review it, look at all the policies. If you have issues with them, highlight things, note them, let Liz know what you would like to discuss about. And then so she can inform the others, like, when what will be bringing up on the agenda so they can go back and look at that portion of the policies within the town hall. So when you come here, we know we're gonna look at this tonight. You've already read it, you've refreshed it. You know, we don't talk about, we don't have to sit here and say, well, geez, I didn't think there was any problem. Now we can go back and refresh myself. We're not wasting ten more minutes refreshing. You already have that knowledge in hand. It's kind of been.
Right.
Okay, questions?
I, you know, I have the question on the, the question I brought up tonight in the personnel box.
Yeah, the bits.
And I have no problem with it. I think it should be there. The only problem I have is it's not being.
I don't have it in front of me the way it's worded, so I wanna go back and review it. I might sit there, I'm paying an individual close to a hundred thousand dollars to manage over a million dollar budget, and he's supposed to put specs together. But they know what they exactly want down there. I really don't know if I need to review those specs before it goes out to bid.
Okay, so that's your problem with it?
My problem? No, it's not my problem. It's the way I look at things. It's like the fleece sheet. Fleece sheet came in and wanted to go out to bids, and I want to go out to bids. My Velcro bulletproof vest, I wanna put my clothes is out. He knows what they wanna. I said, when do you wanna put it out to bid? I wanna put it out March right after Tommy. Do you have your specs ready? Yes, sir. Go ahead and put it out to bid. He comes in with three or four bids, bids that came in the lowest. He tells me, I do not care for this company because of certain reasons. This is why I'm going here. I'm fine with it because I'm paying that person a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to run that department and manage the funds in the best interest of the tax payers. If I feel that something's in that bid once he presents it to us that I don't like, then I would table it and ask, I need this answer before I vote on it. If not, I'm gonna vote no to that.
Right.
All I'm saying is we're paying a lot of money to these department heads. And I do not agree with Mr. Roberts on everything he does down in the department. And Kenny will be the first one to tell you, me and him have come to discussions at times. They've all agreed, but we want way to agree. But I trust his ability and his knowledge to treat the board of selectmen and the taxpayers of the community with the most conservative spending that he can have for the best quality of equipment we can get.
And I've said this before, that they're the head of the departments, all of the supervisors. And I don't, they get paid enough that we shouldn't have to micromanage it.
We're not micromanaging it, Mr. Chairman. All you gotta do is have a spreadsheet to justify what you're spending the money.
So on this one meeting, on this, on this one meeting, that one policy is an issue with you. So that would be brought up to meeting, decide whether the board wants a spreadsheet. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
And in that policy, in that policy, it will say from now on, when bids come in, there'll be a spreadsheet.
Yes, right. Yeah, that's in its way it should be. But we are. And I agree with that. There should be a spreadsheet that has an explanation. Like I said, simple form, apples to apples. So you're comparing what is being bought. And then that in conjunction with the road agent or the agent department head, their information on the use of the equipment, which one is better for them to use. I'm not using it. They are. And we're looking out for the interest of the taxpayer and the employee.
I give Mr. Roberts credit for calling other towns, find out how they, how they experience what with the different companies.
The other part, when we do this, and if we make changes to the town policy, we will call department heads in and have a meeting with them to say, this will be the way the policies be done on bids or other things, outgoing letters, or how things will respond to a couple. But the department heads will know from the selectmen versus the town administrator sending a letter out and somebody interpreting the letters, like the fire chief said tonight. You know, those are governor's orders. They really, they really don't know.
They're very vague.
So this way here, they hear right from the board of selectmen, this is the way we want. Unfortunately, in two years, three years, the board of selectmen can change and things change. So that's what I would like to see. I'm gonna ask the board if that's what they'd like to propose.
Yes, I would, yes.
Mr. Whitman, yeah. Mr. Holt. The administrator, he wanted to say something, and I haven't called him.
That's what we're, that's what we're.
That's what we're trying to recommend.
Wait a minute.
So we do have several
Sections.
Sections that are pending, coming to the board of selectmen. We're trying to keep the agendas down. The original intent, which is still the intent, is to take the current book and separate it into two books. One book would be the personnel policy, instead of calling it the employee manual. The personnel policy would be, you know, what types of leads you can accrue and sick time and insurance and.
So benefits, right?
Yes. And the second booklet would be the operational items, such as how to do a bid, the bid spec, how to go out for bid, you know, the procedural functions that every department has to go through. That's what we're working on right now.
Okay, so my next question is, when would you have this done already?
I don't know.
Come on, can you come back to us? At some point next week and say, my goal is to have this section done with this section and this other part done for another section. So we're not duplicating work that's being done now.
I will try to do that. I will try. Just the next meeting or the meeting after that, an approximate timeframe.
Within two weeks. Try to give us some sort of.
Timeframe.
Yes, schedule.
That way it'll be done, should we?
Can't beat the schedule. Then you'll tell us why you couldn't schedule it, different things are coming up. I know you did send a letter out about budgeting is coming out, it's going up with the party heads.
Yeah.
Selectmen have to sit down and review merits. And what the town's gonna do, if they're gonna do a call at the she's. So, that's on, gentlemen, we'll wait for two weeks to hear from the town administrator on the different sections of the policy. So we're not duplicating what they're already working. Or she.
That makes sense.
They hate to just go through a thing and they've already done it, or vice versa. So, fair, gentlemen?
Yeah.
All right. We'll wait for you.
I don't know. To me, it should be us changing.
The town administrator said last year, her and Laura had worked on the health benefits that they were looking at changing. The board of selectmen gave them guidance last year to work on that and come back to us. So if you're gonna change that now, then you need to change it and they'll stop their work in the middle of the session. I think that's their job, Mr. Chairman. Rochelle.
Question. Do you, do you understand how the ZVA does their cases? And how, when they, when each and every case is prepared, the whole board has to look at each and every packet of completeness. It's something that has worked, it works extremely well. You open it up, look at it, and if one person notices, oh, we don't have this information, you vote on it for completeness. If it's not complete, you don't hear it. And it may be something that we should adopt. That will take care of a lot of issues. If we, if we look at each and everything, okay, well, we got the bids. Let's check it for completeness. Is everything in it? Is everything, a bit of information, we need it. And each person says, okay, yes. I make a motion that the packet bid is complete. If it isn't, then it don't get accepted. I don't know. That's just a thought.
That's how planning board does it.
Planning board does the same.
List of cover of each packet. There's a list there. And it's on the planning review.
But your town planner goes through that and lets you know if it's completed or not, along with you members going through it, just as the code enforcement.
Exactly.
Oh, I think we're all on the same page here.
Yeah.
So let's kind of move on, see where we're gonna go with this when the town administrator comes back two weeks from us. In the meantime, take your, get your personnel policy. Do you have it at home at home? Get one from the town administrator, request one. Mary will have one in your mailbox. Go through it, and then we can bring it up. We'll have certain issues that we need to discuss and get straightened out. There's nothing else on this. I am going to move on, and that would be the last thing on new business. We have nothing.
Can I add one on old business?
No, you can't. It's too late. Shouldn't have been in January. You'll have to put on these selectmen's report.
All right.
Okay. Move on to old business. Nothing being there. We're gonna move on to the selectmen report. I'll go to Mr. Holt. Do you have anything you'd like to say tonight?
Yes, I just have, at the last week's meeting, if you remember, I requested where that picture was taken from, the questionable picture, the so forth. You know the one I'm talking about, the one.
Oh, there were several. I don't know exactly which one. I see it now. You don't have to bring it close.
You know, the one where they dug behind the wall with the bush, it's missing. And, you know, I was just interested in where it came from. I found out today that, well, I found out, it came from GMI. The gentleman's name is Perry. Yes, and it was received by Kerry at the Highway Department, May seventh. And it was given to Liz, I believe, by email. I don't know. But Liz received it according to my information on May seventh. And I'm just, I was just curious after I found that out, how come we never got it sooner? But that's history. But I just wanted to make a report on it. I did find out who looked at the picture.
And while that was taken care of and answered, I have my notes now. Mr. Rochelle.
Nothing in the department as far as the water bandstand at this time. The only question I do have from last meeting would be, have we heard from GMIs, speaking of GMI, on when they're gonna return?
That is, when they're Leonard to, there is a response or letting going to Mr. Kerry. I don't know if we have a response, but I saw maybe town administrator might have something for us, or Mr. Roberts.
Okay.
No, we'll let you on your turn.
We'll wait later. Okay.
You have something on the DA report on that. Okay. Mr. Whitman.
Still haven't had meetings of the Old Home Week committee, but I did call the chairman. For those in the past, we always met the second Monday, a bit habit of calling him and reminding him. And speaking to him on the phone, he was thinking at this point, maybe we should just not have Old Home Week this week and wait until the next year. He says, we haven't hired anybody yet. I did correct him. Hired the Wednesday night entertainment, which can be canceled. But back that he brought up, normally by now, we have all the advertising in the booklet. Yeah, pretty much ready to go to be printed. That hasn't happened. We haven't had meetings. So I said, well, for me, ask the other two members. And, you know, in a week's time, let's decide, do we wanna cancel it or not? But we still have not had any actual meetings to be able to actually put Old Home Week together.
Well, I think emergency management team is waiting till July fifteenth to decide whether or not Old Home Week should go or not be canceled. But I think their, the Old Home Week, the emergency management team finally called us, and I could be wrong, but Liz can correct me. That possibly, and I think you folks have been thinking of it, making it a smaller issue, not having it for a week. Having it for maybe one day or two days and then be on a smaller venue. So it'd be more locally localized than it would be regionalized. Because we draw a lot of people regionally for this. I know, I believe Kelly is holding off on the craft fair till July fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken. They might cancel that one, the Castleburg, July fourth. So I would suggest that you folks hold off maybe till July fifteenth. You might not put advertisements out, but you could always go and put flyers around that the stores have them made up. Not maybe have it as big. Well, just in case we don't have a second spur, we don't have a tick, an in tick or anything with this, and maybe things level out, and maybe by then we can have something.
Maybe an old home weekend.
Weekend.
But I don't see a weekend.
Or just a town, good old town cookup down there.
Yeah, you could still have the casual.
That was the first thing. I was looking at the cats, Bob.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Well, that's a favorite of us.
So I'm gonna look at the town administrator, see if I'm right or wrong with my.
I really.
I'm wrong?
Oh, you're correct.
Okay, I remember that. Okay. So I would say maybe talk to the chairman, just say a lot, but I wouldn't start having and contacting the other two because you're starting to change. Making a decision for a committee that not having a meeting. But I think if you talk to Liz, also you could have a meeting outside venture, like the library.
Oh, I see that.
That was the job today.
Roger was aware that we can do that. There's all the information on that's been sent to him today. That Liz did a format off of the way it needs to be done and how it needs to be addressed with the town council sitting in and putting his part in. So it does have that, where you could have an open meeting outside.
Yeah, he was aware of that. And that's why I said, you know, at first, that was the point of the discussion. And then when he brought up the idea of just canceling it for the year, I thought maybe he should call the others and at least get their opinion on that. But we could still hold a meeting and talk about the possibility of an old home weekend.
All right, Mr. McDonald. You have something you want to leave in business?
I'd like to ask Liz how we're making out with the fixing of the boat ramp down the bay. Have we looked into that?
Mr. Roberts and Mr. Rochelle, you guys were supposed to look into it.
I just got a camera, underwater camera. So I have not gone down. I just, he wanted pictures. We wanted to take some pictures. So I will do that this week. And just jump in there early and have somebody just watch the ramp. And I'll just take some pictures of it. Then it's gonna be developed, and then that's gonna be looked at as to what need we get.
Oh, I think I'd like to say if you're gonna do that yourself, and I know Mr. Roberts said you could down there and watch. You're down there. So I'd like to see, take one of the fire and wreck guys, just have their boat out there just around you. There's no motor in it, just rowing. So even if Mr. Roberts down there and they come too close, they ignore him. At least you got another boat in the proximity area, just for safety's sake. I would like to see that. That makes sense.
Thank you. The other thing is, we discussed with the emergency management of the putting glass spit comes downstairs. Fox and Rex is gonna do it out of Plexiglas.
No, they're not.
But I'd rather see the board vote to have a glass company come in and set the frames and everything.
Mr. Beavers is taking care of that. Granite State Glasses will be coming in to look at what's down there, getting an idea from them, and then he will go out and get three to four other prices from Granite State, Carroll County, Portland Glass.
I didn't know it came in front of the board yet.
Didn't. But emergency management doesn't right have to right now, emergency management, because they're in control of it.
Mr. Chair, I hope they're gonna pay the bill then. It seems to me the police chief was interested in making it something that's permanent. So after the emergency is over, it's still a safety thing.
Well, unfortunately, right now, if anything, it's not, it'll have to be temporary. Because right now, if you've been following the warehouses, I do, because that's my business. Warehouses right now, Plexiglas plants have been shut down. There's no Plexiglas. And a lot of the warehouses right now have been bought, Granite State and Heminglass. What they have in stock is what they've had. And trying to get new orders are anywhere from three to four months out. So something temporarily to get town hall open when it comes time to. Might just have temporary stanchions in front of each space. I've offered, I have cut pieces down at the store. Some are two foot, some are four foot, some are three foot. I talked to John about that day. I wonder what Don Aitken's collector's office that puts temporary ones in, as long as they could find some new channel of aluminum, put them in with lights on so they wouldn't fall over. And then I would offer some to the building inspector's office, town assessor's office, and the planning. Upstairs, I didn't feel it's needed because to me, there's really no reason why anyone needs to come up those stairs to see some in the finance office, secretary. why anyone needs to come up those stairs and see some in the finance office, secretary's office, or the town administrator, if they want to meet, they could go downstairs and hike you. But I do have a lot of cut pieces down there that I've been sitting on, they're clear. I'd be more willing to donate to the town for them. So John's gonna look into that, but he is, oh, cause he's gonna go out and get prices for the emergency management team to see if possibly that can be funded through the grants of the COVID-19, if I'm not mistaken. They go for it. That's why it has not become for the forest like, because they're going out to get prices. Anything else? That's my turn. So anyways, already did the sign for you guys tonight. Uh, I kind of spoke earlier about our police department and fire department, and small let know that I support them a hundred percent. When I was younger in my days, and I always agreed to police department, but as getting older and wiser, and what I see in other parts of our country, when I've traveled and everything, um, I've never had a bad experience with the police department. Nor do I ever hope that I've ever put myself in that position to do that. One, know our police department, for me personally, that I do respect them, I'm glad they have a board that wants to fund them, because they're the ones who get the bad guys and the drug dealers off our street that's been hurting our communities. So, uh, with that all said, and everything I've watched around for the last month, I wanna go out one more time and tell all our town employees, like I said, a customer came in and praised the Highway Department of Tom Road, just wanna say thank you for doing your job and doing the best job you can for us during these times. That's my report. But this time, I'll turn it over to the town administrator for her report.
Um, the first item I have to, I am bringing up has to do with the municipal trail system parking lot at the end of Alt Mountain Road. Um, you have a packet at your seat, and I believe Ken Roberts is still on standby on going to answer any questions if you have any. This was brought up at an emergency management meeting in regards to a lack of parking spaces in the parking lot in that triangle at the end of Alt Mountain Road, where it turns into a class six road. There's a field there, part of the easement that was approved in the, uh, select, uh, actually on the town warrant, to warn our folks. And, um, the, the proposal is to create more parking spaces in that triangle. Um, the fill could be brought in from, um, the town highway department pit. Uh, the only cost would be labor and equipment. The excavator would be needed for one day, the loader for two days, and for dump trucks for one to two days. And, um, that area could be expanded all within the easement for additional parking, because right now, there continues, uh, continues to be a problem with a lack of parking for hikers that go up there and park at the end of the road. And you've all experienced this a little bit as far as hearing about the problem when you attend the emergency management meeting twice a week. And so this is a solution, or a potential solution to help ease the, the lack of parking. Um, in your packet, you have a colored aerial diagram, and you'll see the triangular spot, that's where there are some current parking spots already in place. Um, Mr. Julius is fully on board with this. Ken Roberts has been up and looked at the area, and has come up with a very brief proposal, as you can see on the first page of the packet that's at your seat. I just need a, and a, uh, motion from the board to approve that.
Okay, so I guess my input would be, I have no problem doing this, I just don't want homeowner later to come down and regret what he's asked, saying that he's agreed to. There's more parking, we're gonna have more people.
Yeah.
And this is the first weekend, we didn't have any concerns or complaints from either Jesus Valley Road, Alt Mountain. And I, in the winter time, there's just gonna be more stone wheel trailers, more cars and trucks. I just, I have no problem doing this, making more parking. I just don't want Mr. Julius to come down and say, you gotta get through something about it, because it's getting all out of control. I want to be aware of what he's, what he's agreeing to, that this is going to increase what to do.
It's my understanding that he is aware of that, he knows that that triangular area is the easement area where we have the, we can do that.
Okay.
We can do that.
I would just like to have a letter stating that, and I will go along.
Mr. Julius, this was a conservation project.
Yeah, I understand.
And he has been really good to that board to get this project up and running. And we, we knew that the parking lot was small, and I don't think anybody realized how much people were gonna enjoy hiking up there. Now, he's being more than fair to allow us to extend that parking lot in a little bit more.
I have no problem with that. I just want a letter from him stating that he's in favor of this, and I'm not gonna go in just by words. I'm gonna trust, but I want to verify, and I want it within my thought. That's all I'm saying, that's what I would like to see. Mr. Whitman, you have anything to add?
I got one more.
I didn't realize you were up. Mr. McDonald.
I think that it should go back to conservation board if you want to let them, because they're the ones that set all this up, and, and Russ Wilder put a lot of work in there, and a lot of the guys did, cutting all the brush and everything, and they were, they worked right with Mr. Julius.
Well, that's the point. Why is the conservation commission asking us to do this versus Mr. Robbins?
Because the governing body is the one.
I understand that. I'm trying to get to that point with Mr. McDonald.
We're using town, they, because they gotta use town equipment to do it, so it's gotta come in front of this board to get the okay to put town equipment back in there.
I understand that, like you're going back to the point of maybe it should be conservation doing this, not me, to let Mr. Julius, I'm just stating then why is the conservation commission asking the governing body to do this?
No, not.
Because the conservation commission should be the one asking the governing body, according to your description.
They should be the one, it's their project, they're the ones that did all this up there, and put the work in.
The governing board asked us to do that.
That's right, and they should be the ones up talking to Mr. Julius, and then coming in front of us and saying yes.
And they should be giving us a look from Mr. Julius.
Well, whatever you want, but I think it should be through conservation board.
I'm just, I just want letters, I want paper trail, so we don't, and all of a sudden, Mr. Julius says, this isn't really what I anticipated, because once that parking lot gets bigger, and people know the parking lot's getting bigger, you're gonna have more flow going through there, you're gonna have more snow machines, you're gonna have more motor bikes going through there, cross-country bikes, you're gonna have pedal bikes going through there, you're gonna have a lot more things once they know there's more parking.
But I don't see anything in this right-of-way deed that says he can take it away at any time.
He could always petition the town saying that it's.
Provide easement, provide the rules.
Could always petition the town to revoke the warrant article that was a preflagged, I believe, by petition, is that correct?
If only a warrant article could rescind it.
He's given us a legal.
Well, I understand that. All I'm saying is, he gave us that, but he didn't say we have all those people parking there this year, came down and asked us again to spend money, but no parking signs up. When this comes again, we make that parking lot bigger, we're gonna have to police it even more. So all I'm asking for is that he is in agreement, where we have the easement on that property, that he's in agreement with what we're gonna do there.
I agree.
Kim? All it is, is an easement. That's it. Yes, sir.
Yes, I agree with the project, and it is a problem up here, there's no iron in it, but I'm missing something. How big's this parking lot gonna be, town-wise?
We have Mr. Roberts on the phone. Mr. Roberts, are you there?
Yes, sir.
He, explain to Mr. Holt. You explain to Mr. Holt how big this, we're gonna turn this parking lot into?
Okay, Mr. Julius and I, John, you know, we went through this whole thing, and he's the one that brought up the suggestion of filling in and expanding the parking lot, and, you know, we were happy to look at that, but we, I need permission from the board to select them to go in there. It's a light cleanup, and what it is, if you look at the, I, I think the print you're looking at, if you come from his house off the Class Five Road, and look right straight ahead, it's that whole basic back wall, lack of a better term. There's no parking left or right until you get all the way to the back, and then it's the whole backside all the way across. He's agreed to allow parking, fill in all the way up to the stone wall, and allow parking all the way across the backside. He just does not want it on the left-hand side of the roadway going in, which is where the signage is, so there shouldn't be any parking there. But it will add, it, it will add another 12 parking spaces directly in the back, and people should be able to get in and out easily.
So my, my question to you would be, would you, would, willing to have your secretary do a letter stating that Mr. Julius is in favor of doing this without a problem?
Yeah, not a problem. I mean, I just, I spent several times up there with him, and he's the one that brought it up as a suggestion.
And I understand that, I mean, because he mentioned it to me, but I would just, for, for paper trail, I'd just like to see it jumped in the record with the easement. Mr. Rochelle has a question, I believe.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, the area that is being extended, is it that area that, that I'm looking at on the map, that's?
Little blue square.
The little blue square. That is exactly the, the only area, correct?
Okay, it's, it's, I, I'm not looking at what you have. So the road that comes in, the parking area goes from right all the way to the left-hand side, which is a Class Six road that goes down in the back. It'll be the whole backside now, rather than a small one on the right and a small one on the left. It'll be the whole thing.
Oh, the whole, the whole triangle?
In between the blue and the red.
Got it, okay.
Right, against the tree line, not on his field side.
Not on his field side, on the tree line side.
The tree line side, okay.
All right, so the right of the red line direction.
Yeah, I think it's the red line. The trail goes to the right, which is a ski mobile trail. It goes from that right line all the way to the left, which is the Class Six road.
Right in here.
And it's straight back.
Thank you, Joe.
I don't believe, no, I don't believe that's here. No, it's not this area, it's right here, right across here. Yeah, so for the back, something for the back.
So it is, it is somewhere here. That's what I was asking.
It just creates one large parking in one straight line all the way across the back.
It's not the area, the triangle that you were pointing out down here, it's that up there.
Right, over here, over here. I, I think that's outside of the easement area. The easement area is in between the blue and the red line, the triangle, the triangle. That's the easement area for parking.
Okay, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. We're discussing the area up there.
All right, I'm gonna stop here. Ken?
Yes, sir.
Do you have the picture in front of you, or can you get it?
Uh, no, sir, I don't have it directly in front of me. I'd have to see if I can find John's file.
All right, so what we're looking at is, uh, you have a red line going in, out to where it's marked in blue, which I take it that's the existing parking area. You have a red line showing the easement area for the roadway to the Class Six road, you have a blue line coming in around his farmhouse. There's a triangle out there that I take it is part of the field, and you just said it's not the field area, is that correct?
Yeah, it's not the field area. It's actually the old road that goes in around the corner, and it's, when you come around that corner, when you pass this house, you go up to that corner to take a left.
Yeah.
It's everything to your right.
Okay, so basically, it's where you have highlighted in blue is where you're gonna make the expanded parking area.
Right, what it is, is that we never filled it all the way into the stone wall, we were just putting dumping material, we were digging off different places on Alt Mountain, and we got that much done, but, you know, he suggested that we do more of just fill, dumping fill in there, and that's something I can do, you know, I've got, actually, I've got the loader working in the pit right now, I can bring it from the pit, and take it right up there.
So what we're looking at in the blue square area, that will be improved parking, because you already showed some parking there, that's, okay, that's what I thought, so.
Yeah, from.
Wanted to be clear on that.
So all I would do was, so I have no problem with doing that, I just would like to know from Mr. Julius that he's in favor, and that we're within the easement rights that we're supposed to.
What I'll do is another drawing, and in the drawing, I'll actually give it to, uh, John and have him sign it and everything, but have him sign the drawing as well as a letter confirming that we're allowed to go in there and expand the parking beyond where it is today, back to the stone wall.
That would be fabulous for me, yes, to see how the rest of the board feels. That works? You need a motion, Mr. Man? Do you gentlemen need a motion to approve the town highway agent going in? There'd be no material about this, and there would be no material costs, we utilize the fill from a pit, that the only cost would be labor and equipment, excavator one day, loaded two days, three dump trucks under two days, to approve the area of Alt Mountain Road on the Class Six road that we, where we have an easement with Mr. Julius. So moving. Enough for discussion. I mean, I want the discussion that Mr. Julius signs off that he is in agreement.
We looked at having conservation, I'll pay this.
I'll pay it?
Yeah.
There's no cost, the only cost is just going to be is the labor involved.
Labor, your fuel, your trucks.
You don't keep.
I mean, there's still, there's still cost in this thing, the town, the taxpayers are still paying the cost.
Well, the conservation commission didn't pay any cost to it, we went in there and made the first part of the.
We were also doing a road up there that we had to get rid of.
I, I'm just saying, if you're talking about fuel costs and everything else, I, I'm not gonna go that.
I mean, now you're hauling out of the pit, before, we were hauling right up on Marlene Drive out of there.
Kevin? Uh, cool. Picking up on what Virgil just said, there is cost here, and, uh, the gravel, that's, I don't care where the gravel's coming from, I'd say they're nice, that's worth money. We can use it in other projects, so, but I got no problem with it, that's a product happening.
Oh, yeah.
And, yeah, that's all it's gonna take to fix it, or help fix it.
But my, my thought is, this was a conservation project. If they want it up cap, it shouldn't fall on every taxpayer in Alt, and it should come out of conservation, if they want more added to it or anything. We don't mind doing the work to help, but if there's costs involved, it should come out of the conservation.
I don't believe the conservation is even aware of this that's going on right now. I think this is brought up between the police chief, emergency management team, highway agent, and town ministry, and Mr. Julius. I don't even believe they are knowing of that we're doing this, by standing.
We haven't been able to have a meeting, but I, I know Russ Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Julius is aware, but the conservation committee, the designated agent, and the municipal trail system governing.
Mr. Holt, I think I said one of them. You know, we go and we build the these hiking trails, you know, it all sounds great, and then all of a sudden, here we go with other problems, very similar to Mount Vegas, uh, that's a parking issue out there, a big, big thing here. I suggest we might be a little more careful in the future, careful with trails or hiking trails and so forth, we should have infrastructure along with it.
Well, that's what conservation has, getting a lot of trail systems.
Fortunately, we would, we never foresee this coming.
Oh, I believe you're gonna have the problem, because our trail systems are finally getting out there. These trails that we're building weren't really advertised, weren't really, but now you can go on your phone and see them, and you can see different hiking spots and all, and the conservation's all.
The last five years.
Well, what the difference is, now, now you've been putting it in the paper every week.
This one, this one here, this is the trail of the week.
Yes, sir.
And this one, this is my trail of the week.
I think the whole conservation opens up trail systems and stuff, and it's a good thing, because it brings people into hiking, that we're gonna get busier and busier with the hiking.
Well, with every action comes reaction, we're getting a reaction now.
Yeah, exactly.
COVID-19 and all the hiking, so motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Kevin, so are you amending that with the letter from, uh, Mr. I don't pronounce it well.
Mr. Julius. So I am making amendment to my motion. Vote on the, do I have a second for my amendment?
Second.
So I'll vote on the amendment that Mr. Julius has to sign a letter that he's in agreement with this. I'll call for vote on the amendment, although I'll call for Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Whitman? Yes, the amendment passed. So the motion is, we're trying to go up and increase the parking area on the land with easement with Mr. Julius. Increase that with the town equipment. And that Mr. Julius signs off that he's in agreement with the project. Hold the board again, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, both in the affirmative. Yes, ma'am, your next report. He told me a short meeting tonight, and I think you were wrong, you fit to me.
Uh, next, um, just a question for you. Um, it has to do with the cemetery department. And last fall, when the budget process was going on, um, there was a proposal at the time from the Parks and Rec director to have the cemetery department be its own department, not under the authority of the Parks and Rec director. And I recommended at the time that this wait until 2020 for the beginning of the budget creation season, so to say. Um, so we are now here at that time, and I want to know if the board is in favor of that. Were last year about it, but there wasn't enough time for a lot of research to go into it and to actually separate the department out from under the Parks and Rec department. Now there is time, so, um, our Parks and Rec director, you know, when I sent my email out a week ago about, you know, it's time to start creating your budget, she asked me that question. So I'm bringing it up to the board to see if you still wanna go that route or not.
Can I speak?
Go ahead, Mr..
My suggestion is not to. We've already been through it with that cemetery department. We, we had, the town took it over because it was going broke. The trust fund was being used up. We had one employee down there all winter, and come spring, he'd be doing, still doing maintenance. So we took it over so we could take the employee and move him over for snow in the winter, over to the town. And we split the cost on it. And the grounds and maintenance helps do all the maintenance on everything. And when they need help, they pull it from ground and maintenance over there. That's why we moved that over there, because we had a lot of trouble in the cemetery budget. And we're still trying to rebuild that trust fund. And my advice to this, this board is to keep it the way it is right now.
My feeling too is to stay as is. Until we decide where the Highway Department or Public Works Department is the one that we talked about two years ago. I'm still haven't abandoned that idea of Public Works Department. So I'd like to see state status quo myself. Nope.
I'm, I tend to agree with you and Virgil on this one, at this point, yeah.
Keep it the same for now.
Well, I just have one thing. I think, yeah, where she's coming from, I think is, is the right way. I don't think Parks and Rec should be running cemetery. But I understand the situation. You, we have to, don't, uh, don't get me wrong. I think we should have a Public Works Department with a cemetery division in the Public Works Department.
Like, grounds and, grounds and maintenance is what has that department under. Yeah. Parks and Rec, it's grounds and maintenance.
Grounds and maintenance, well, okay, yeah. But I understand how it's working. And I understand you had problems in the past. Very similar to water.
Yeah, that was run completely off the trust fund.
But I think it should be a separate entity.
Yeah, because that was run completely off a trust fund. And they bought the farm next door, which granted needed to be bought, but it should've went in front. It's a wrecking like that. They went and bought an excavator.
That's, that's.
And it was a light, careful buy.
That's not here and there what we're talking about now, but. Tonight, the whole, I guess the consent of the board is state status quo.
Okay, thank you.
Quit now, yeah. Yes, ma'am, the next slide.
Next slide is, you'll see a letter in the signature file, it is to GMI in regards to your request from last week. Um, to restore the wall in kind and, you know, work with neighbor, et cetera, et cetera.
And I thought we weren't gonna put the permits required and this and that, that's up to them.
That's correct, but I did want to, right? And did add it in there that our wetlands person has already, you know, come up with a offer if GMI wishes to consult with her. They're gonna have to get their own wetlands, that's their choice.
So utilize, utilize the consultant, Mr. Holt.
Yeah, if they want to do.
There won't be.
The more information, the better.
There will be a New Hampshire D S permit required for anything's on within the area of the water. Ken Ross Highway Manager has consulted with the local wetland specialists we regularly use. If you choose to utilize this company, contact information is as follows. So they're basically saying you have to get the permit.
But that's also what, not what we voted on having in the letter. We said it up that we weren't gonna force. Because we said it up that we weren't gonna put in the letter about you need a permit to do the job. That was up to them.
Well, seeing that we, that's how I voted, I voted yes to. Seeing that we knew, seeing that we knew a D H wetlands permit is required, why not tell the contractor he's gonna have to give?
Right.
And.
And take one.
If the local already been done, they enter the local contractor, then they can reach out to the local one if they want. So if they don't want or they don't have to.
So you're forcing somebody to fix it, to get a permit for a wall that was illegal to begin with, because there was no permit for it, and fix the wall.
Over to, half the walls around the lake didn't have a permit when they put it back in the sixties, but they're there, stone walls. They never needed.
Now on time. We can win to do docks and stuff, we made to rip them out.
And, and the reason for that dock, you know, when it was originally looked into was because there was never a permit for that property. And so D E S is requiring that dollar amount. If there had been a permit in the past, an original permit, that fee only would've been about five.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I guess the other thing to put it to is, GMI, the way I look at that pitch and Mr. Holt held up tonight when I had it back in my store, we had it last week's meeting, they had no right to even dig anywhere near that wall. Because that didn't include the permit. But yet, all the sandbags went over to that dock, if you remember in those pictures.
All the way over.
You know, my feeling is, we, we stated that a permit will be needed for it, it's up to them to get.
The town never got permission to disturb anything on that property.
Well, the town.
And it was vegetation removed, and it was, and it, whether the wall was, had a permit to put it in there or not, it was existing.
But that wasn't the town, that was the contract.
Oh, no, I understand that. And it's the contract, but we're still responsible and asking the contractor to make good.
You have this one before, so you've all read it, do you agree with it or not?
I have one. Mr. Holt? The end of the first paragraph, I'm kinda confused here. Once the construction stopped in Lake Falls, the side edge was no longer touching the town wall, leaving an approximately one-foot vertical wall of earth spanning down the embankment, which we believe attributed factor.
I have, that helped loosen the wall, because the old wall was attached to the old wall.
That's what the previous sentence said.
Right.
Yeah, but.
But there wasn't a foot gap there.
No.
It was touching.
It was touching.
It was up against it.
It was before the construction.
The new wall, it was touching.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It wasn't a.
I thought there was.
Very versatile.
No, not at all.
Had to fall over.
But was it chink, it wasn't chinked or anything, it'll start the erosion from touching out.
No, it was just up against it.
What, what is it?
Had to lean over, that's when you see the gap.
So how, so I can change?
Within a couple of inches. It was, it was, it wasn't exactly.
Put that there.
Some, some areas were touching, other areas were not.
It was not even blocked.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just.
It wasn't.
All right, so the letters be changed and be sent out next week. And has the attorney reviewed the letter?
Yes.
Okay, prove it?
Yes.
Thank you.
The letter be sent out next week, gentlemen?
Yes.
Table this one to next week. Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have for open session.
Okay, sounds good to me. So at this time, gentlemen, we need approval of the minutes of June 1st, 2020 regular session. Make a motion to approve the amendments of June 1st, 2020 regular meeting.
I second.
Motion to amend, everyone, one more second. My Paul Rochelle approve the minutes of June 1st, 2020. Do any discussion? Being that I'll hold the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman, yes, vote is in the affirmative. Next gentleman, on the consent agenda. Let me just get through it here real quick. Make a motion to approve everything on the consent agenda from the Assessment Department, item one, four, and five, excluding number two.
Now, why are we excluding number two?
Because that has litigation issues and should be discussed in non-public first. And if we approve that, and then when we come out of non-public, we will put that into the minutes of the meeting at that time in open session.
All right, I'll wait for non-public. I'm not, I'm not even approving this, gentlemen. The votes know on everything until we do non-public.
Until when?
Till we do non-public.
So the only issue that we discuss in non-public will be item two. That's why I'm excluding it, so the others should be passed and we'll discuss items.
I second that.
Motion made, room one, would approve everything from the Assessment Department on the consent agenda on number one, or fourth, Landing Department, and five, Trustees with trust fund. Second, my Paul Rochelle, excluding number two. Second, my Paul Rochelle, I open it up for discussion.
Um, Rob disappeared on, I have a question on the change taxes.
Okay.
Rob?
Hi.
On, on item number one. Oh, you don't have.
He doesn't have the consent agenda.
On item number one, you have the different, um, places here, 62, 6400, 6500, 600. Is that money we're giving them back?
Item number one.
Land use change tax.
Uh, no, 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 that's money that's coming to us. Yeah, it's just the amount of money, I'm copying the format of my predecessor, which was just itemizing, yes, correct. On a land use change tax, that's how much money we charge.
Land use change, the lease.
Correct.
Now, they're changing coming out of land use?
They are properties that should either never have been in land use in the first place, or properties that were not removed properly at the time that they disqualified. They're just problems that I inherited, I'm cleaning them up. There was a stack of them on the desk.
Why wouldn't they have to pay, fix the?
Because you don't have 18 months to charge that.
Only you're changing it. Lily over, even though we're changing them now.
Correct. Well, for whatever reason, the timeframe, there were several, unfortunately, it appeared that one of my predecessors was allowing people to enroll property in current use in less than 10-acre increments if they own 10 acres of property.
Yeah, but you can do that. You can put a two-acre piece in land use. Oh, yes, you can too. If you were, if you make more than $2,500.
Not a wetland category, you cannot.
If you make more than $2,500 off a two-acre parcel, two and a half acres, I can put it into land.
Oh, okay, you are correct with the, with the, any fourth category non-qualified for that. You're talking about the farm, there's a whole separate statute about that. And yes, you're right. You can put wetlands category in less than 10-acre increments, and you can put production farmland less than 10 acres.
It doesn't have to be farmland, you can garden it at your own house. I could do my house, and if I made $2,500.
Split timberland into current use in less than 10 acres.
Right, right, timberland you can.
These are timberland, these are properties that I have researched, that were, actually, these are properties that were researched before me by my immediate predecessor who never got to doing that sort of job. So I'm just cleaning them up.
Have we been collecting regular taxes on them, or still giving them land?
We're collecting regular taxes on them.
We have been, or?
Ad valorem is the word for that.